Council colleagues who are here with us tonight and for our administrator, our clerk, our attorney, our auditor, and all of those who directly report to council. At this time, we are ready to begin and call this meeting to order and hear our public hearings, 1 AZREZ 0725 00164, Highway 165 rezoning.
This is a request to rezone parcel TMS 179 0000 113 from the Act 10 zoning district to the AGR zoning district. Prior to the 2001, prior to 2001, the subject property's parent parcel was zoned AG and was rezoned to AG 10 zoning district with the adoption of the ZLDR in 2001. In January of 2022, the 64.32 acre parent parcel was subdivided to create a 20.57 acre parcel identified as TMS 179 0000 112. Then in July of 2022, the three acre subject property was subdivided out of parcel 112. Prior to this request, no other zoning map amendment requests have been submitted. The recorded plat that created the subject parcel includes a note stating the density has been met for TMS 179 0000 112 and no further subdivisions are allowed after the plat is recorded. Here is the location of the subject property when looking at the county as a whole. The future land use designation of the subject parcel is agricultural preservation. And the adjacent parcel to the west is zone Ag 10. The parcel to the north is zone resource management. And parcels to the east across Highway 165 and those immediately to the south are located in the AGR zoning districts as they were less than 30 acres in size as of April 21st of 1999 and designated as settlement areas with the adoption of the 2001 ZLDR. Surrounding properties are undeveloped or contain single-family homes. The subject property is located in flood zone X. Here is an aerial view to the north and to the south. And these are photos of the subject property and adjacent property to the west. These photos are of parcels across Highway 165. And this is a slide that shows the comparison of allowed land uses in the current Act 10 zoning district and the proposed AGR zoning district. Uses with a C are allowed with conditions and uses with a S require special exception approval by the BZA. The uses in bold are only allowed in a zoning district for which is listed under. The request to rezone to the AGR zoning district is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan's recommended agricultural preservation future land use designation, which is implemented by the Act 10 zoning district. And the proposed AGR zoning district permits a higher residential density of one dwelling unit per five acres to one dwelling unit per acre than the agricultural preservation future land use designation. In addition, this request does not meet criterion number one of the Comprehensive Plan, Section 3.1.7a, future land use categories, or ZLDR, Section 4.9.5, settlement areas, in order to qualify for inclusion in the settlement area, which states that parcels sizes of 30 acres or less, including highlands and wetlands, on parcels existing prior to April 21st of 1999. Therefore, criterion A has not been met. Additionally, the parcels directly adjacent to the subject parcel, not including those across Highway 165, are in the RM and Act 10 zoning districts. And while those uses allowed in the requested AGR zoning district are similar to those in RM and Act 10, the density and dimensional standards are very different. Therefore, this criterion has not been met. Criteria C and D are not applicable. And none of the criteria has been met. Therefore, staff and planning commission recommend disapproval. And prior to the August 11th planning commission meeting, no public comments were received. And at the meeting, the applicant and the owner spoke in support. Two comments in support and one comment in opposition were received for today's public hearing. And then today, we did receive 25 comments in support of the request. This meeting was noticed as required. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for presenting that to us. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. We have three people signed up. The first person is Anthony Bryant, followed by Amy Chico and then Richard Bell.
Anthony G., I'll be a little technical tonight. Anthony G. Bryant, 2123 Cortlandt Avenue, Charles Towne 29403, former BZA member, 1999 to 2006. The comment will be made based on the plan enabling act in 1994, which is a failure. And if we look at this map, we see, I saw Larry Grooms today at State Parks Authority meeting, and I clearly told him, Mr. Grooms, I said, well, there's no definition of growth. We keep hearing words that really don't mean nothing. And so if there's not a clear definition of growth, then, you know, what are we really talking about? Well, then the comment, he mentioned 2001, Bill. And you know who's governor of 2001? The CEO of Maguire Woods, on behalf of Dominion Corporation, Jim, Jim, was it, was it a guy named Jim? Was it Hodges? Yeah, Jim Hodges. So Dominion Energy Corporation will empower all this growth. But Dominion Energy Corporation is operating in good faith with the public in terms of its program and activity. I just paid $1,000 today. So they're not, they're not, and they're not, and they're not in cooperation at all. So for you to make recommendations under the plan enabling that, you know, the BZA like I was years ago, to enforce something, it must be enforced. Now, if someone's opposition against you, the Parks and Recreation Commission, guess what you could become? You become a paper terrorist. You can be in violation of US Patriot Act or Homeland Security Act based on my speech, right? I make a ton of speech, right? So, I mean, if you're against certain international policy, like you're anti-a policy and Dominion Corporation says that you're anti-a policy of a former governor and someone's got an email addressed in Chicago going to Turkey, right? All right, this is how deep I am, okay? I got kind of like a Farrakhan kind of perception on land use, right? So I want to be very clear in terms of Dominion Energy and Jim Hodges and the CEO and all this development's going on because you're not really, you're afraid, and you've got $15 billion that they pay utility lobbyists money and somebody is afraid to define growth in this state. Somebody's scared. We got to pay for their fear.
Amy Chico, Richard Bell.
Hi, good evening. Amy Chico, 29 Lineback Drive. Thank you for letting us come tonight. I just saw there was a Live Five News report that was brought to my attention. I just kind of wanted to, you know, this zoning that we're asking for was just a property owner looking to rezone his property so he could possibly subdivide it to build one house. It wasn't, you know, we're not looking to make a big contentious rezoning and it's not going to be a big commercial development. It's one three acre property looking to subdivide it in order to build one house on the property. And to kind of go back and looking at some of the planning staff comments regarding that this doesn't really fit into the surrounding area, you know, put on a map so you can kind of see the comparison of the existing zoning versus the future zoning. The property is up here and the majority of the zoning around the property is the AGR. You know, say that's incompatible use, where I'm not quite sure that it isn't an incompatible use with all the AGR that's around it. And then looking at the future zoning map, it's the same color as all the AG property. And I know it falls under the agricultural preservation. And then looking at agricultural preservation, the majority of, I guess, let's just say, the property is supposed to be preserved for active farming or maintained for agriculture operations. You know, this property was never kind of intended by the property owner, the original property owner of the existing 64 acre tract to be used for agricultural uses. And then the secondary use within the agricultural preservation is for residential support of those agricultural uses. So, and asking for this zoning, you know, again, it's just to build one house on the lot that he actually lives on in another house. There's enough room on the property to build a one acre lot in order to put the house further back away from the road to allow for the 75 foot buffer. The buffer could even be enhanced. And thank you for your time.
Richard Bell.
Good evening. Members of the Charleston County Council, my name is Richard Bell. I'm the owner of the property in question. I'm here to plead my case tonight in supporting rezoning this three acre parcel from AG 10 to AGR. We are requesting this modest change in zoning to allow for a single additional home. I understand the county's concern about honoring past promises to the original owners in this area, commitments made to preserve our rural heritage and prevent unchecked urban sprawl. Those assurances were vital. I respect them deeply and appreciate the effort that has been put into preserving our rural way of life. Tonight, I bring you compelling evidence that this request aligns with and does not undermine those very promises. Herbert West, who owned the original 64 acre tract from 1999 to 22, from whom I purchased the three acres, is strongly in agreement, along with Victor Ayala, the current owner of the original tract of property that shares two of my property boundaries. They both have submitted letters of strong support. Mr. West, who purchased the property near the time of the original zoning, writes that this change preserves the rural and residential nature of the community without overdevelopment, considering the home will be tucked back into the woods and barely visible from the highway. Mr. Ayala also echoes that sentiment, calling it a sensible and community-friendly proposal. John Cordray, whose property shares a property line with mine, has also given me his verbal support. These are not distant voices. These are the stewards of this land, the ones who lived on those original covenants. In the case of Herbert West and Victor Ayala, they have held ownership of this property for the past 26 years. Additionally, their explicit approval as the individuals most directly impacted by this rezoning underscores that this proposal does not disrupt the harmony or expectations of those who know and have owned this property. What I'm requesting is modest, permission to build one farmhouse on about one acre, no commercial ventures, no dense subdivisions. This rezoning upholds Charleston County's values of thoughtful growth. I urge you to approve this rezoning. It's a small step that honors our past while embracing a sustainable future.
Thank you so very much.
That's it.
All right. I'm going to pause at this time. We have Councilman Moody who is joining virtually based on a rule change that we passed some time ago that was extremely beneficial to have council persons join us and participate fully even when they're virtually in, present with us here today. So he is present. We're going to suspend our public comments at this time and just go to item three on our county council agenda, third reading of ordinances, 3A, MRF perpetual easement to RCRM family.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a non-exclusive perpetual easement to RCRM Family Limited Partnership on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number 3930000003, located at 8099 Palmetto Commerce Parkway, North Charleston, South Carolina. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
3B, town of mega transfer of election authority.
An ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the town of Megate to the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Charleston County. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
3C, town of Hollywood, transfer of election authority.
An ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the town of Hollywood to the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Charleston County. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Second readings, 4A, ZLDR 0125 00133, Parker's Ferry Overlay District Text Amendment.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance Number 1202 as amended, Chapter 5 Overlay and Special Purpose Zoning Districts, Article 5.12, Parker's Ferry Community Overlay Zoning, PFO, Table 5.12.5, Parker's Ferry Community Overlay Zoning District Use Table, and to add vehicle storage as an allowed use for the business service node and commercial properties that have frontage on Highway 17 Savannah Highway if approved through the special exception procedures of the ZLDR. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Chairman, just on the next one before we vote, a brief discussion on 4B, if I'm allowed.
All right, let us at least get it on the floor first. All right, so financial incentives for Project Modern, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and an entity currently known to the county as Project Modern, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with Project Modern, providing for payment by Project Modern of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for certain special source revenue or infrastructure credits, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes paid by Project Modern under the agreement for the establishment of multi-county industrial business park and other matters relating thereto.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Chairman, thank you. I just, I know we debated this in committee, but I'll make it brief because this is a, you know, county council meeting, there's more people, and anytime you're using public money incentives, I think it's worth the public knowing. And I'll ask again, we still don't know who Project Modern is, correct? At this point, we don't know the name of the company?
That is correct, sir.
And this for the public record, what are the financial incentives that we're giving and what do they consist of? I understand the reasons, but I think since it's the public, what are we giving up?
The incentives are a 20-year fee in lieu of taxes with fixed mileage rate along with a 6% assessment ratio.
What would their ratio be without this incentive?
10 and a half percent.
Well, again, I respect that you've done great things by bringing businesses, but this, again, briefly, my position is that we're giving incentives and all the reasons you say that that would apply to everybody that owns their own business, and I wish we could apply that across the board. I can't vote for something when I don't know the name of it, and I understand, but that's my position respectfully. Thank you.
All right, roll call vote.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with seven ayes and two nays.
4C, amendments to livability ordinance, animals and fowl.
An ordinance amending Chapter 3, Article 1, Animals and Fowl of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances Number 1702 as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
4D, amendment to the county fee ordinance, TNR Services.
An ordinance amending those portions of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances, Section 2-137, dealing with sheriff's office fees, and to add a provision clarifying animal services fees. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Item 5, committee recommendations with first reading of ordinances. We're going to take these one at a time. 5A, discharge of firearms in urban unincorporated Charleston County. Request to consider. Is there a?
Move for committee recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
All right, properly moved by Mr. Moody, seconded by Mr. Boykin. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay.
Aye.
All right, up to third reading.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance adding a new section 14.5-2 to the Charleston County Code of Ordinances so as to prohibit and make unlawful the careless or negligent discharge of firearms in certain unincorporated areas of the county, to provide for the penalty pertaining to such violations, to provide for certain exceptions and limitations thereto, with the right to amend up to third reading.
5B, amendment to the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, ZLDR, first reading. All those in favor, let it be known by, oh, let's have a motion. Is there a motion for 5B? Remove.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. All right, the reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance Number 1202 as amended at the following document locations, Chapters 3, 4, 8, 9, 11, and 12.
5C, ACP 0625 00125, Kane slash Road Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request. Move for committee recommendation. All right, can you remind us of the committee recommendation?
To disapprove.
Very good. All right, all those in favor to disapprove, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. All right, the ayes have it. 5D, ZLDR 0625 00134, Kane slash Road ZLDR Amendment Request.
Move for committee recommendation, that's disapproval.
Committee recommendation, disapproval. It's properly moved and seconded, seconded by Mr. Boykin. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay.
Aye.
All right, and there is no, nothing to read. So we're going to go back to our public comments. Thank you so much, Mr. Moody. If you are willing or able to.
Chairman, thank you very much. I appreciate the accommodation, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Public comments? Oh, we still have one more public hearing? Okay. 1B, ZREZ 0725 00165, 4301 River Road rezoning.
Hey, this is a request to rezone TMS 259 0000 123 from the AGR zoning district to the AG 8 zoning district. Prior to 2001, the subject property was zoned agricultural general. Because the parcel was less than 30 acres in size on April 21st of 1999, the property was included as a settlement area and placed in the AGR zoning district upon adoption of the 2001 ZLDR. In 2025, the applicant contacted staff about the possibility of establishing a landscaping horticultural business on the subject property, which is not an allowed use in the AGR zoning district. Landscaping and horticultural services uses are allowed in the AG 8 zoning district, which is the proposed zoning district, subject to conditions which are listed on the slide. Here is the location of the subject property when looking at the county as a whole. The future land use designation of the subject parcel is agricultural residential. And the subject property has frontage along River Road and is vacant, and surrounding properties are zoned AGR and Ag 8 and developed with single-family residences or are vacant. The subject property is in the AE 10 in shaded X flood zones. And here is an aerial view to the north, to the south. And these are photos of the subject property and the adjacent parcel ending in 034. And here are photos of the adjacent parcel ending in 121 and a parcel across River Road ending in 087. This slide shows the comparison of all land uses in the current AGR zoning district and the proposed AG 8 zoning district. Uses with a C are allowed with conditions, uses with a S require special exception approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the uses in bold are only allowed in a zoning district it is listed under. Now, if the rezoning map amendment is approved, all uses allowed within the AG 8 zoning district would be allowed on the subject parcel. Staff found that the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Agricultural Residential Future Land Use Designation because the requested AG 8 zoning district would permit a lower residential density of one dwelling unit per eight acres than the current allowed density in AGR, which is one dwelling unit per one acre, and allows uses consistent with the agricultural residential future land use designation. Staff also found that criterion B was met because nearby properties are largely zoned AGR or AG 8, both of which allow primarily agricultural uses and single-family detached residences. Any dimensional standards would remain the same with the exception of the minimum lot size, I mean, sorry, the minimum lot areas and minimum lot widths and the permitted reduction in density allowed in the requested Ag 8 zoning district. Approval criteria C and D are not applicable. And two of the approval criteria have been met, therefore staff and planning commission recommend approval. And then prior to the August 11th PC meeting, no public input was received. The applicant and one speaker spoke in support at the meeting, and then no public input was received prior to tonight's public hearing. This meeting was noticed as required.
Thank you very much. Do we have any speakers?
We do. We have three people signed up. The first person is Anthony G. Bryant, and then Laura and Daniel Berryman, and then Autumn Waddell.
I want to ask a question too. Why can't we as citizens call in and why can't we do video? They do the city of Charleston, why can't we do that, get that convenience you got? Anthony G. Bryant, 2123 Cortlandt Avenue, Charles Towne 29403, former BZA member, 99 to 2006 and beyond. And again, we're going, we're going back to we started off at, you know, with you, right? And the comprehensive planning and the fact this is 99, 2001, 2025, and so these are all the uses that are available there now. And then you got the BZA in this, you got this for us. I'm just totally confused in terms of what you're voting on. It's unclear. You have to have a clear program to relieve injustice, find justice for other people. So it's an unclear program. Because as I looked at that presentation, I'm confused from the UDO, right? The UDO to 2025, we got AGs, all we got an urban growth boundary ground line moved by, what, Long Savannah Plantation, something like that, years ago? I mean, it's a mess out there. And because we need to get the sheriff department to be involved in terms of these zonings to ensure that they're getting their end, their money, a development fee some sort in terms of growth. That's what I'm here for. I'm not here for, you know, who's going to, you know, who going to win. You know, the question is, you got a flood zone, right? Flood map for the whole area, right? Right? So everything you do is comprehensive in nature. So one thing affects another thing. So we come here, we should come here for comprehensiveness and clarity and comprehensiveness between the rural areas, suburban areas, and urban areas. And this is, look at, look at the port right now with Barbara Melvin. She's left the port, lied to you, lied to the school district, lied to everybody, and the comprehensive plan is thrown off and United a bunch of incentives for, for the State Parks Authority. You understand? You're here for comprehensiveness, not for subjectivity.
Laura and Daniel Berryman?
My name is Daniel Berryman. My wife will be speaking tonight. Yeah, on the, on the, hoping for the approval of this, our business is, is just a small company, but we service Kiowa in Charleston. It's a great spot for us to work from. It's a, yeah, we don't look to really do anything more than have our little company, which we've been on the island now for 14 years as, in our landscape company, just, yeah, this piece of property, hoping for the, yeah, for the approval. So you are going to speak. Thank you.
Autumn Waddell?
I apologize. I misunderstood which rezoning this was for, so I don't need to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Public comments?
Yes, we have 15 people. The first person is Anthony G. Bryant, followed by Chelsea Kirkland, and then Brandon Fish.
Dominion Energy of South Carolina, Jim Hodgins, CEO. Every Democrat and their mama oppose my position. Now, if I didn't pay the thousand dollars, right? Then that means that I'd be in violation of the Adult Protection Act by nurses, doctors, social workers, and, and law enforcement. That's one thirty years in jail. So I'm here today, you happy I ain't in jail? And, and I definitely support Gaza. So therefore, I support Gaza, I'm Louis Farrakhan. So at that point, then, I go to jail for US Patriot Act or the Homeland Security Act, which I was against Tim Scott preaching, and against you being at, at, at the, at the October seventh, twenty-twenty-three piece. It was about peace. The Pope said it was about peace. Well, what you got to do, weighing in all people's point of view, in particular, black folk, who was owned by everybody? Everybody owned black people around the world. In Brazil, their culture owned more, more slaves than anybody in the world. I'm a Charlestonian. Three dates are important. Seventeen thirty-nine, Jimmy Stoner Rebellion. Seventeen forty, the Black Codes. Eight sixty-eight, the Constitution freed me with Robert Smalls. And September eleventh, eighteen ninety-five, to December fourth, eighteen ninety-five, our holocaust. Jim Crow and Ben Tillman and the red, and the red shirts. Don't play with me. This ain't New York. This ain't Chicago. This ain't the Midwest. We can go and see where we've been, we've been fought and sold as slaves in this town. The black majority by Peter Wood clearly lays that out. I don't play no games. I'm from Charleston. Ain't nobody coming in here to tell me how to think.
Chelsea Kirkland, Brandon Fish, Nina Kaufman?
Two-four-four Marsh Oaks Drive. Thank you all for your time and your consideration to take these first steps in action to help us keep our neighborhoods safe from careless gun use. I come to you before you today begging you to vote to pass the discharge of firearms in urban unincorporated Charleston County. As a member of the Gettys Hall neighborhood, I want to be able to enjoy our neighborhood without the fear of a stray bullet, which is the current reality, and not have to explain to my children why the police can't stop the shooting. Further, for further clarity, we are not asking for the ban of guns, but rather an ordinance that puts the safety of our community and the children at the top of our priority list. So please give us the tools to safeguard the things that matter most to us before it's too late. Give your county officers the tools to protect our community and have the power to enforce more than annoys ordinance in response to the reckless discharges of firearms steps away from homes, churches, and schools. Thank you again for your time and consideration of this amendment.
Brandon Fish, Nina Kaufman, Marsha Gertzman?
Good evening, County Council. My name is Brandon Fish, and I serve as the Director of Community Relations for the Charleston Jewish Federation. A few months ago, I was here cautioning that the loud voices of a small group of extreme activists might escalate into disruptive action. Unfortunately, that concern is now becoming a reality. Elbit America was invited to Charleston County and in return has invested millions in taxes in jobs for local families and for critical infrastructure. Like Boeing and other contractors in our area, Elbit works with both the American and Israeli militaries. They have no more influence on the war in Gaza than Boeing does, yet they have been unfairly singled out as a target of harassment because they are an Israeli company. More troubling, these activists have gone far beyond public comment and free speech. They are confronting local employees simply trying to get to work, and on their social media, they are actively promoting the harassment of company executives in their private homes. That crosses a line. In Charleston, we pride ourselves on civility, respect, and being good neighbors. These actions do not reflect these values. We must say clearly that that behavior is not welcome here. It would be reckless for County Council to continue to entertain motions that threaten our economy and embolden fringe voices. Our Jewish community has attempted to rise above the rhetoric of these activists, but tonight and moving forward, we stand firmly. Harassment, vandalism, violence, or hatred, whether toward Elbit, its employees, Israeli-Americans, or any of our neighbors, has no place in Charleston. We invite you to join us in this stand. I urge you to send a strong, unified message. Let's turn down the temperature and recommit to treating all people of every nationality, faith, and background with dignity and respect. That is how Charleston remains a community that we can all be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Nina Kaufman, Marsha Gertzman, DeeDee Coff?
Good evening, Council members. I'm Nina Kaufman, a Johns Island resident, business attorney for twenty years, and a proud Jew. I'm very concerned about how Elbit Systems has been singled out for pilot program cancellations for several reasons that should concern you too. The first is the impact on the Charleston County economy. It sets a terrible precedent. When it's that easy for Charleston County to reneg on its pilot agreements because today a company is Israeli, what happens tomorrow? Businesses will not want to do business in Charleston if they think the business climate is unstable and that local authorities will cave to the whims of political pressure. The second is the moral betrayal. Years ago, our state legislature unanimously recognized its friendship with Israel. Israel is also one of our top forty trading partners, creating nearly one hundred fifty million dollars worth of exports for us. Don't our friends deserve support? To discriminate against Elbit is to side with radical extremists who disguise their hatred of the Jewish state as a concern for human rights. Finally, the lies used to manipulate our policy. You hear genocide and free Palestine from people who don't even know what that means. They haven't even set foot in Israel, and I have. I have family and friends there. I made my first trip there in nineteen eighty-two and was there most recently in January, where you still see the wreckage of the October seventh attacks, and there still are hostages in captivity. Israelis, truthfully, are a multi-ethnic, multicultural people who just want to live in peace and security. This council can send a powerful message by standing firm on principle and equal treatment for Elbit. That's our constitutional promise. Honor that legacy. Thank you for your time.
Marsha Gertzman, DeeDee Coff, Graham Horstman?
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Marsha Gwertzman, two-thirty-three Fishhawk, on Johns Island. I'm going to take the same issue that my two colleagues and friends just talked about to take it from a much more personal standpoint. Twenty-four years ago, I missed being in the Twin Towers by a lucky break. I had a business snafu that kept me out of town. I would have normally been on the eight-forty path train into the Towers. I would have been part of that rubble. I know what hate feels like. I have lived it in those times in New York. I came to Charleston for a better life. I came to Charleston not to have to live that. When we see what is happening here, the, the anger, the vitriol, and it's not just a free speech matter, we are better than that in Charleston. Israel stands for so many of the same moral values that we do here in Charleston. The Jewish community is a proud, proud part of the Jewish, is a proud part of what Charleston is, and so many of the violent acts that we've seen so far against Israel, some have been publicized, some have not been publicized, and I understand why. But you know, the council knows of these violent acts. You have recently called them disgusting? I would ask you to stand firm, not to let us get on a slippery slope. Thank you very much.
DeeDee Coff, Graham Horstman, Adam Friend?
Good evening. I want to speak about a false narrative and lies that have dealt with personal attacks against an honored member of this board and an honored member of the library board, totally unjustified and scurrilous. Recent months, outsiders have continued to attack against persons of Jewish faith for the only reason that they are Jews, and the personal attacks are without any justification. Under the guise of free speech, these attacks hide a hateful ideology. And this is the same ideology which in the last century, our country defeated with the KKK, the communists, and the Nazis. And make no mistake, moral clarity requires this board and our lovely community here in Charleston to say that that will not happen here and such things will be rejected. Remember, it's Jews today, but make no mistake, tomorrow, it will be faithful Christians and then faithful members of other faiths, and that cannot be allowed to stand. Who funds this outside group? Where do they come from? What are the sources of all their money? It all goes undisclosed and hidden by a furtive, evil ideology. Rest assured that the rightful response of this community should be, this is moral repugnance, and we reject it. Thank you.
Graham Horstman, Adam Friend, David Quick?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, my name is Graham Horstman. I live in Mount Pleasant. After a long and difficult week of political violence in this country, members of our community awoke this past Sunday to a vile, cowardly, anti-Semitic crime that occurred right here in Charleston. It appears that some of these pro-Palestinian terrorist sympathizers have escalated their hateful rhetoric into hateful action. And I believe that you all know what I'm speaking of. Council members, the destruction of property, vandalism, intimidation, that's just how it starts, but it's not how it ends. As you know, this behavior ends inevitably, as it always does, with violence against persons. For years, this hate group has been allowed to peddle their lies and blood libels at these meetings with impunity. And instead of being met with unequivocal condemnation, it seems that they have found in these chambers a sympathetic venue, an incubator to transform their ignorance into rage, and sadly, among some of you, a receptive audience. Mr. Wareman, I was disappointed to hear you parroting some of these same talking points. Let it not be lost upon you that so soon after this public show of support, these newfound bedmates of yours were emboldened to criminal actions. Council, when you platform and entertain these fringe elements of society, when you enable their behavior and reward them with attention, you are recklessly emboldening them to action, and we pay the price for that, as demonstrated this past weekend. Thank you.
Adam Friend, David Quick, Chris Newhart?
Good evening, Council. Adam Friend, I live on James Island. Think I know most of you pretty well. I'm here just to say that I think that freedom of speech is so important in our country today, and like Graham just said, there was a vile act that occurred nationally where somebody who was very outspoken and went to the people and tried to speak his mind about his thoughts and, I guess in some ways to teach some others maybe how some of the things they think, maybe there's other ways to think. And that person was, was killed. And, you know, that's just something we can never stand for, and I think that we owe it to everybody here who, who shows up. I mean, I applaud everybody here to take time out of your lives to come here, officers protecting us. I, I just think that this is, this is America. This is our opportunity. This is why we're not another country. Something I would like to say that I've noticed, I, you know, part of this stuff that we do for the incentives for these companies that come here, I do understand that the process is a lot of times, the first two readings, it sounds clear to me, you guys have no idea what the company is that's coming, that we're giving these incentives to. And fundamentally, as Larry brought out, I, I think that would be hard for me if I sat on your side and I'm, and I'm automatically giving approval. And I understand that that's for a bidding process because they need to know which cities are going to accept them potentially. Anybody who doesn't give them these breaks, obviously, they're not going to choose. So I do understand that pragmatically that has to exist. But by the third reading, if it's my understanding, you do know, you are given the information as to what that company is. And in the case of, the, the lot of people are upset about right now, my understanding was that was known by the third reading, the name of that company. And it sounds like it would have been on y'all's plate to be able to, if you had the time to, to look into who that company is. I know not all of you were on the committee to vote on at that time, but I would say that it's important that you guys have to know who you're approving so that you then can then tell the public, because nobody came out and spoke. Not a single person in the community came and said anything. Now they are. I think that's important that we work on that process.
David Quick, Chris Newhart, Richard Haversham?
Hi, my name is David Quick. I live in Mount Pleasant, and I'm glad that the fee in lieu of taxes came up earlier today. I'm not sure many people in Charleston County know that we're subsidizing business in a county where overdevelopment seems to be a driving problem. So I've known Larry for probably thirty years, since I was in my twenties. I would hope that you know I'm not anti-Semitic. Right, Larry? I know you're not supposed to say. So what I'm going to say today is a concern that involves both the fiscal responsibility of what I see as corporate socialism and the sanctity of life, particularly that of children. In the last two years, I've watched daily with horror the bombing of Gaza, the killing and maiming of civilians, the killing and maiming of children, the killing and maiming of family, pets, and farm animals. I am not Hamas. I am not a terrorist. I'm a Methodist minister's son who went to Israel when he was sixteen years old. We met with Jews, we met with Palestinians. I went to a Palestinian refugee camp. I saw it in the eighties. It is with complete disbelief that our county council worked out a deal, a sweetheart tax deal with Elbit Systems to manufacture howitzers in Latson. County council's lieu and fee of taxes gets Elbit a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar break that could be money going to our schools, could be going to our, our roads. I appeal to you, I appeal to your ethics, dissolve this deal.
Chris Newhart, Richard Haversham, Autumn Waddell?
Can you all hear me? All right. Masaal khair, is me, Chris. I used to bill eight-five-oh-six William Street Drive. Aulchi, I'm a Drast, I'm a specialist to build a set of shark asset, what come on the La La Arabia, but Jammie Missouri to translate for everyone. I specialize in Middle Eastern studies and the Arabic language at the University of Missouri. I am more than qualified to speak about Elbit Systems and their crimes in Palestine. They've enlisted in by several independent international human rights organizations as complicit in genocide, and their facility in Latson, which makes one-hundred-fifty-five millimeter howitzer cannons that will not distinguish between hostages, aid workers, or kids, has received millions of dollars of, of tax breaks via a fee in lieu of tax agreement with this county. However, I, I often found that one of the best ways to illustrate what Elbit does is not through a lecture, but through the voices of Palestinians themselves. To start, this is from an interview I had the pleasure of having. My grandfather, before the Nakbe, he always loved playing with his Jewish neighbors. I know very few of them do this to this, to this extreme, but he and his friends would help them with chores on Saturdays, and they would help cook for them on Ramadan. It's hard to get my grandfather to speak about Palestine. He does not like to talk about it. I remember one day during one of the bombings on Gaza, I don't remember who said it, what it, what they exactly said, but it was some, but someone on the news said something along the lines of, "All Palestinians and Muslims hate Jews." He looked at me straight in the eye with such an energy, it made him so mad, he said, "Anyone who tells you this is lying. They lie through their teeth, and you shouldn't listen to what they have to say. If they say that, never to listen to what they have to say." Mommy, mommy, where are you? My family was in that building. Oh, God, there is no other God but God. Please, my family was in there. It burns. Daddy, it burns. Daddy, please make it stop burning. There are children here. Stop. Go away. There are children here. Leave the children alone. Oh, God, my father, look at what they've done to them. There's nothing left. There's nothing left to bury. Where is Sarah? Where is Sarah? She was in the north. Has anyone seen Sarah? Sarah motherhood, woman, wife of you, has anybody seen her?
Richard Haversham, Autumn Waddell, Max James? Richard Haversham, Autumn Waddell, Max James.
My name is Richard Haversham. I live in the Phyllis Community over in Mount Pleasant. I'm here to thank this body for the new drainage system that we got, and it's working. You know, when we came to this body years ago and said we had a problem, y'all started the bar, the bar rolled, rolling, and, and started the process, which we put in a new system, and it is working, and with the system, we got some other benefit. It's even working with the state bitches that's in front of my house, it draining all the water off. The second part of my speeches is, I read an article in the newspaper a few weeks ago where one of the residents of, with the, in one of those subdivision, Law 41, made a statement that this body is destroying the park, wetland, and, and putting all the traffic in the neighborhood. But let me show you how hypocritical they are. This is Hugginac, Bullittsville Boulevard that they're building. You see all that blue that they get? All that is wetland that they're running this road through, and this road here runs through three settlement communities, the four mile, seven mile, six mile, and seven mile community, and it's taking all the traffic through their community, not in the community, but through. Also, they're building a brand new park, a 20-acre park, and if you look at it, the Bullittsville Boulevard runs on the top, and the bottom is, is, is six, is a reference road, and all that comes right through this area, this, all this wetland that they're destroying. And the folks that said no subdivision complained about two acres and it, about their, but their traffic is going in their neighborhood, not through their neighborhood, but going back into their neighborhood. Thank you.
Autumn Waddell, Max James, Nate Hubler.
Good evening, County Council. My name is Autumn Waddell. I live at 509 Reinsong Drive. Elbit Systems not only harms our schools by diverting public funds from them through the file agreement they have with you, not only harms Palestinians by providing Israel with 85% of the weapons they use to commit genocide, but their presence here in the Low Country makes our community more unsafe. I've seen two pedestrians being hit with Elbit employee vehicles while peacefully protesting on the side of the road, leaving visible injuries. Not only that, but I stood there as one of these victims tried to file a police report and the officer present repeatedly refused to. It turns out this man was off duty, acting as private security for Elbit and not there as a law enforcement officer as his uniform and car would suggest. Although both these incidents were eventually successfully reported and the police reports are on file, no further actions were taken, even months later. On the other hand, action was very quickly taken against a protester, wrongfully arrested and charged with tampering with a vehicle. It went to trial and he was found not guilty by a judge. The double standard is clear. Is this because with Elbit as a client, the police department is not willing to take any action that might affect their side jobs with them? As a Charleston County resident, this makes me feel unsafe. If the police department is in the pocket of a private corporation, how can I trust them to protect me? Like I said, I've already witnessed an officer in uniform refuse to do his job when someone was hurt, even when he watched it happen. If not for any moral responsibility to peace and humanity as a global concept, I implore you to at least take these incidents seriously as examples of how even here in our own home, this company creates conditions of insecurity and violence. These are not the kinds of businesses Charleston needs. I ask the county to end the contract with Elbit, keeping the safety of your constituents in mind. Thank you.
Max James, Nate Hubler, Matt Colburn.
My name is Max James. I'm a relatively new resident of Charleston County, and I don't sit on any committees or have any seat of power. I actually just moved to this neck of the woods about a year ago, and thank God I've received such a warm welcome from the friends in the neighborhood. I deeply admire the city's culture, heritage, and natural beauty, and I love this country more than any other. On one hand, I see a great place to raise a family with tremendous opportunity, and on the other hand, not just I, but we've all been made aware of bad actors who seek to destabilize this community and civil society as a whole. The disingenuous radicals, the pro-fakeistinians who harass peaceful, law-abiding citizens and sow chaos wherever they go. And in the wake of last week's horrendous tragedy, we're currently mourning the murder of a young father and righteous man, I call on this council and the citizens of Charleston, which happens to be this country's oldest Jewish community, to stand firm against the anti-God, anti-Judaian, and anti-civilization pressure. Do not let this city and this country and this society become just another worthless breeding ground for murderous radicals. Thank you.
Nate Hubler, Matt Colburn.
My name is Nate Hubler, and I'm a resident of West Ashley. Today, the United Nations of Human Rights Council released their legal analysis of the conduct of Israel in Gaza pursuant to the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide. What did they find? Well, their report concluded that Israel met four of the five genocidal acts in Gaza as laid out by the 1948 U.N. Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, which, for those who don't know, ironically, was formed in the aftermath of the Holocaust. According to the commission, the genocidal acts of Israel include, quote, "killing Palestinians, causing serious bodily or mental harm, deliberately inflecting conditions of life calculated to bring about the destruction of the Palestinians, and imposing measures intended to prevent births." With that in mind, I simply must ask why a company that supplies 85% of Israeli weaponry to facilitate these crimes against humanity is getting handouts from the county to subsidize their presence here? Elbit is a company that made $321 million in profit in 2024. Why do they need another $784,000 from Charleston County? Why are we prioritizing a business relationship over our humanity? Why are we devaluing our students? Why are we devaluing our teachers? Why are we undercutting our school district? We don't need to be arms dealers to be a thriving county. We can find economic success and offer productive, meaningful jobs to the community without leaving our hands staid red with blood. By living here and paying my taxes, your decision to prop up Elbit has left blood on my hands as well. I deserve better. Everyone in the county deserves better. Where Elbit goes, death follows. Where Elbit leaves a mark, all that remains is pain and suffering. Our role here cannot be erased, cannot be ignored, and certainly cannot be forgotten, no matter how civil people are. Like other committee members have said for months on end, end the tax breaks, tell Elbit to leave immediately, and show the county that you value humanity. Thank you.
Matt Colburn.
Matt Colburn, won't somebody please think of the billion-dollar tax companies and their tax breaks? I was also the one charged with vandalism. I was found not guilty, so I'd like people to know not guilty in a court of law means not guilty, so I'd watch the slander. Second of all, I've noticed one thing they haven't talked about here is the war crimes, the credible war crimes that are committed, over 600,000 dead, 300,000 children under the age of five, right? You have mass starvation, we're talking about property damage, what about all the Gaza laid-down levels, waste, you've seen it every day. I guess they can heckle, right? They're allowed to break the decorum rules? Because you tell us about decorum, are they allowed to break and heckle? Is that what it is? Can somebody please tell them? Because my time is going to go while they get to heckle.
Sir, please continue. Let us allow him to speak as others have gotten up here without being interrupted. I do appreciate that.
How about not screaming or yelling at us? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Again, war crimes are there every day. We see it happening, and that's why, you know, they're trying to silence us now, but also we smell the desperation, right? But we have them against the ropes, and we know that. The entire world is against them, the ICC, the ICJ, the U.N., every credible organization has said that what Israel is doing is a genocide. Now, I know you won't really care about it, they probably get off to the screens of Palestinian children, I know there's exact other people here to that, but I mean, again, it's all just nonsense. Nothing to talk about the war crimes, just starvation, over 600,000 dead, over 600,000 dead. And, you know, what we hear, talk about the tax breaks for Elbit, and he admits they're shipping to Israel as well. Again, this place is engaged in war crime. You are building weapons that 100% going to be used and engaged in war crime. Now, I want to take this last 30 seconds to say from the bottom of my soul with everything I say, goddamn the state of Israel, terrorists, assassins. Lord, let the Palestinian people, Lord, let the Palestinian people.
If we ever needed prayer, we need prayer right now. And so at this time, we invite Chaplain Roy Gould to come and lead us in prayer, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Loella Smalls, Director of Community Development.
Almighty God, I pray for this council meeting. Give each council member the wisdom, the guidance, as they delivered on the item before that. May every decision in your son, because Lord, you look upon us as your children, all the benefit is for your glory. And Lord, we ask that your spirit fill this room, because we are created in your image and in your life. Take us out of cell, that Lord, your spirit may endure loss with peace, love, compassion, and understanding, in your glory we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Item two, minutes from the August 26th meeting. Item two, the minutes from, okay, properly moved and seconded, okay? Thank you so much. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Close, there's nay. The ayes have it. Item six, committee recommendations, six A, infrastructure criteria for reason.
Six A and B.
All right.
It's a brief discussion on.
Properly moved. Was it seconded?
Yes.
All right. Discussion, Mr. Kowalski.
With this on six B, we had this discussion in committee, so this briefly, since this is a county council meeting, and it's the use of public money, I just want to restate my reasons. I have the recommendations, and this would now be a total of about $4.5 million of public money, and I believe if we have this money left over, it should go back to the taxpayers. It's not our money, and that it's not showing disrespect to anybody, any man or woman that does a job that gets paid and does it honorably, that's showing respect. I just wish we could put this money in the other, back to the taxpayers, but also, if not that, to the disaster relief fund, because of what we know, at some point we will be hit with a hurricane, we know that the FEMA money is in jeopardy, isn't showing respect, disrespect anybody, but as I understand it, and if I'm wrong, that this can be given, the person could quit the next day. I don't know how something given retroactively would be a bonus and incentive for people to stay, and it's using taxpayers' money, in my opinion, as though it was monopoly money to do things, and it's not intended, in my position, disrespect anybody that, again, when people are paid, they also get 42% of whatever their salary is in addition is paid. So when we talk about what public employees of the county are getting paid, we have to add the 42%. We have people, some getting close to half a million, that will get the 2,000, and people getting hundreds of thousands, and I wish that we could do it for those who need it most, but in that case, the money belongs to the people, not us, and I don't feel, if we were in private practice and this was money coming out of our pocket, we would do this. But to respectfully say that, I understand others differ, but that's my position, and it's a public county council meeting, I just wanted to restate that. Thank you for the opportunity to state it.
Mr. Tooten.
Mr. Vice. Chairman, the numbers you gave are a little bit inaccurate. It is not 4.5 million, it's 4.2 million that council has already voted for. This was just extra left over that we looked at at Mr. Pryor's request for the part-time employees, and also the 42% that you keep mentioning is inaccurate. It's a scale, the more you make, the less that percentage goes. That is just strictly an average.
All right. To be clear, I thank you for the correction. I said, I meant the totality, as I understood it, this was about 240,000, and I was merely adding that to the 4.2 from the 2,000, that's how I came up with it.
No, sir. It was 116, 25 employees. It was, it was the surplus that they went back through in the Budget Office and Finance Office of the 4.2 that council authorized, that some employees had left or retired or had been fired or were not here, which created a gap, again, in the pre-approved, which was actually earned, it was not taxpayer money, it was interest accrued, so technically the money that came in was not out of someone's paycheck as far, or to go into taxes, it was through the treasurer's office based on investments. So granted, it started with taxpayer dollars, but the money there, as Ms. Perry can explain, was, was brought about by investments from the treasurer, not out of people's pockets.
All right. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Close, there's nay. Item seven, I'm sorry, Mr. Sasse, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a little bit more of a discussion and some, about six A.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kowalski got, beat me to the punch.
I apologize.
That's all right. He got to B before A, so. I'd just like a little bit more discussion, exactly what this means. What are we, what are we trying to, what are we doing here? I mean, are we setting some sort of regulation? You know, I mean, I understand, Joe, what we're doing, I know we got a lot of traffic in places and all that, but it's not all, but some of the, some of the growth is not generated by the county, it's generated by other, other entities as well, and so I think there needs to be some coordination here or some explanation here, a little bit more. I'd just like to know where we're going with this.
Yes, sir. This is about our zoning and planning staff not being able to consider the lack of infrastructure as part of their process to recommend approval or disapproval. They don't have that tool in their toolbox, not even allowed to look at it. This particular case that came up around John's Island was, was on point for this whole issue. I didn't know that they didn't do that. It just kind of sounds, you know, counterintuitive that you wouldn't consider that. This particular upzoning would have allowed about 60% more residential density. It's right on top of one of the worst intersections in Charleston County, Maybank and River Road, and my point being is, it doesn't make any sense, they couldn't consider that to advise us to make a presentation, and that could be part of their recommendation, one way or the other. The other issue with this, and I said it the other night, you know, I would, if this had been a commercial upzoning, I'd have been fine for it, because that's business, that's services, that's goods for the people who are already there. It's the residential component that bothered me, because we already have a failing road that's so bad, it, it, they had to create a new category for it, and to think that we would, you know, that our staff could not consider that, you know, we didn't make it, I mean, I mean, you're right, there are other entities involved that annexed, and they increase density on an island, and they don't build roads, but we do. And, you know, so as the representative of that particular area, there's no way in good conscience I could sit back and just ignore that we have something missing in our process. They're going to come back, and we're not voting on anything permanent, we're just giving them the ability to go out and do the work. When the amendments come back, we can get into the weeds of those if there's any negative implications from that, but this is a process to allow them to come back to us and present, you know, their recommendations, and, you know, it just, I'll go back to it, I don't know how in the world, and we all know our traffic and infrastructure issues. I don't know how in the world, and we all know our traffic and infrastructure issues, that how that is not part of staff's process or something they were allowed to consider when reporting to us. We're the final decision makers. But I just thought that was, there was something gravely missing.
Mr. Sasse, I do apologize, because we've already voted on A and B. And so, for the... Did we not just vote?
Yes.
It was, you know, moved and seconded, and we voted, did we not? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not teleported into a different...
I'm fine with that. What I'd like to say is that I thought that we did consider those things, and I thought that's why disapproval was, was, was... And we, we disapproved it. We, we thought it was, we thought it was a bad plan. But, I mean, I think that, and I think that's something we do need to consider. So I'll vote for that tonight. I'll vote with y'all to do that. I just want to know more about it. I just, you know, I just want to know more about it. We've come up with something. Thank you.
All right. Seven, we did... Now, did you get the additional information you wanted? Because you requested on Thursday some additional information as to whether or not, not matching, but making certain that there were no budgetary commitments.
No budgetary restrictions, no commitments after the grant goes away.
I'll second Mr. Pryor's motion. Did you get the satisfaction of the answers that you wanted?
Yes.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. Ms. Honeycutt, council comments.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to be first. First, I just want to take a moment to say what a privilege we have to be able to come here in an open forum and express our viewpoints. I think it is one of the bedrocks of our democracy. I think the threat of not being able to freely express ourselves is one that we should all be very, very concerned about. And the threat of violence as a result of voicing your opinion is even more concerning. So based, you know, on some of the events of the recent past, I hope we can all take a moment to reflect as we get ready to celebrate the 250th anniversary of this beautiful experiment next summer, that we can all reflect on what it means to be a free country and the true value and privilege we have in that.
Mr. Darby. All right. Mr. Wareman.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, obviously, a challenging, a challenging issue that the community is clearly grappling with. You know, I'll be clear, I remain steadfast in my position. I still oppose what we're subsidizing with Elbit. I think that that issue has sort of been decided, though, but nevertheless, you know, I remain steadfast in that. I, I will also continue to say that opposition to Elbit or what Israel is doing is not antisemitism in and of itself. And so, you know, to the extent those things tend to, I think, get conflated, I would push back against that. You know, being clear on those points, I would also say that I do think there is that risk. I mean, I think antisemitism has historically been a sort of pernicious issue that, that can kind of sneak in. And so, I think we do need to be vigilant about those, you know, language or allowing, you know, that sort of thing to creep in. And I'm, you know, have been willing to support steps on this council to do just that, such as, such as a, an anti-discrimination ordinance. You know, I don't entirely know why we're talking around the, the issue over this weekend, so I'm not going to be explicit, but I'll, you know, I also don't mind saying that I don't condone any of that. And I think it's, it's totally inappropriate and frankly, counter, counterproductive to the message that folks are trying, trying to convey to even engage in certain tactics and, and, you know, activities in an effort to, to have a healthy and necessary, if very difficult, debate. So I'll leave it at that.
None from you, sir. Mr. Sasse.
Thank you, Chairman. I very much appreciate Ms. Honeycutt's comments. Our, our country is a great experiment. We're, one, we're getting right, ready to have the 250th anniversary, which is incredible. We have to make sure that people, people are allowed to have free speech. That's our number one, our number one situation, is having free speech. So I'm all for that, and I appreciate everybody else's comments. Thank you.
Mr. Pryor.
Nothing than, I agree with Ms. Honeycutt and others who would say ditto, but also, I want us to stay prayerful and vigilant, because things are escalating in this country, and it's to a point to where it's us against them, or the left against the right. And I'm just afraid that the rhetoric is, the rhetoric is going to escalate, and it's going to cause some problems. So I want each one of our council members to be prayerful and be vigilant. If you see something, don't be afraid to call Public Safety Department or the Sheriff's Department, because you don't want your family to get involved with this. What we do, our peers are thankless. Job, we get criticized all the time, but we still, we hang in there, because we want to see this county succeed. But when your family members are getting dragged into this, it's time to make some good decisions or think about it, but I would say protect yourself at all times. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair, Kowalski.
I want to say that, in view of the recent events around the country, it's of great pride that, you know, I sit on this council. We often disagree, but I think we all have great respect and friendship for each other in the end, and we have full... Some of us are Democrats, some are Republicans. I was the chairman of the Republican Party for four years, but on this council, we act as, through love of the county and hopefully, love of America. And, you know, even though we disagree on issues that it never becomes personal or threatening, as we've seen in other places, I would like to mention what happened to Charlie Kirk. You know, I think whether a moment of silence or the honor is memory, he has a connection to Charleston. When I was chairman of the Charleston County Republican Party, he was a young man in his early twenties. He would often come to our, our meetings, and he was this beginning, his ministry or his turning points, and you can see his spirit and goodwill, and he would, you can see that you found yourself in the presence of somebody very special. You could meet with him, and I'd see him in the grocery stores, and he'd come away feeling like you were his best friend, and he was respectful and listened. In many ways, this showed the way for how people should debate, and he paid the price in today's American. I do think that free speech is what we have to, is listening to things that you hate or dislike. Certainly, I heard things tonight, but that's, you know, I wouldn't want anybody arrested for that or physically harmed. I would add, though, that some of the slogans we heard tonight, especially the last week, were the same things written on the bullets, and the slogans of the person who killed those, at the church in Minneapolis. He put the same phrases, as you heard tonight, on the bullets and the weapons he used to kill children at a church not too long ago. So there are consequences for that. And I just also want to add in a much more, this on an issue I'd like to put up for our agenda, to see if we can increase the time for the moratorium in the historic settlement communities. I say that, I went to the town of Mount Pleasant meeting, and they had annexation, because as everybody knows, if you traveled up Highway 17 North where all the subdivisions end, Mount Pleasant ends, and then you can smack into the, the settlement community, and they had requested annexing, and they deferred it. But the difference is that Mount Pleasant allows three homes per acre. Our is one home per three acres. And if we don't do a moratorium or we don't increase it, there's no reason those annexations and increased density will go all the way to Allendale and can repeat in Highway 17 North what happened in Highway 17 South. And we have an opportunity, I don't know which committee that would go towards, maybe expand the years or terms of those moratoriums before we're... Again, as I always say, the developers think decades ahead, and if we want to preserve what we love about Charleston, we also have to think far ahead. And this would be an opportunity, Chairman, if that could be on, an item for the appropriate committee to extend our moratorium to all the historic settlement communities for a longer period of time, because if we don't, developers will find a way to make inroads, get it, and they won't exist. So I just put that out there as a, as a future thing that we should consider. And again, I thank you, and, and even though we disagree in that, nobody could improve the good intentions of Rob and Rast, and we disagree on some major issues, but it's not personally disrespectful in any way. Thank you.
Madam Attorney. Mr. Administrator.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Salisbury.
No, sir.
Yes, Mr. Darby.
I don't want anybody to think I was talking about anybody, but I just wrote a question to Mr. Boykin, and I hope you'd remind your response. I asked him, when will America be America? Impromptu. And he answered, whatever happened to loved thy neighbor? And I think that's a good response, because there's a spiritual warfare. I'm not one, I'm not some religious fanatic, but it appears that it's beyond race, beyond class, beyond politics. It's almost a spiritual warfare. And until these religions get their fork in line, it's still going to be problems. There's always this dualism, and it's part of the saying, there's whether it's traditional Judaism or Christianity is that struggle or duel between God and Satan. Some theologians say it's between God and man. You've got this dualism and Hinduism between reality and, and illusion. The Zoroasterism, a religion of all, between the god of light and the god of darkness. There's always this dualism going on, and that's what's happening in America today, this dualism. And until we can get rid of that, we're going to have to ask the question, when will America be America? Because we will indeed love our neighbors. I had to walk out here, when I saw the two groups, I literally had to walk out, because I started crying. What is happening in America? This dualism, I, I, I guess that's the nature of the country. I would, but when are we? Well, look at ourselves first, because it's not my responsibility to start with the world or to start with the church or with the schools or teachers. My responsibility to start with me. Until I get myself right, how in the world can I get others right? And, please forgive, I'm not preaching, but it just, it bothers me that we call ourselves America and Americans and the way we treat one another. So again, it's beyond politics, it's beyond race. I think this is some spiritual warfare. I didn't mean to take that much time, sir.
Thank you so much to all of you, and I'm not going to be long. I am praying for the Kirk family, his wife and children. We cannot ignore things that happen in the world, particularly those things that are unjust and those things that are inhumane. I would like to thank Chaplain Roy Gould, because again, sometimes when we are in the thick of the heat of the debate, sometimes we can't necessarily be the ones to offer prayers for ourselves, especially if we're going to go back to being heated about something else. And so, thank you for being a presence, a spiritual presence, not only tonight, but you're here every week. And so, thank you for that. You don't get paid to do it, but hopefully, our thanks will be the star that will be in your crown. And then also to Ms. Loella Smalls. I attended, we gave the Community Development Directorate a charge at some point to, especially during the pandemic, when we had the ARPA funds, et cetera, and there were nonprofits that would come up and fall short, because they didn't have capacity to be able to even write the application, to be able to apply for the money that were being afforded to all of these nonprofit organizations. And I used to sit down there at that point and say, we need to do something, you know, to bolster and shore up these nonprofits. And by goodness, they put on the Powered by Purpose Conference that occurred just a couple of weeks ago. And for those of us who did not come, it was on par with any national, international conference that professionals go to be developed, and those nonprofits went there, they were able to network, but not only network, they were able to learn skills that would be applicable and practical in their daily business practice. And so, let me say thank you for making not only an idea, we talk about the American idea, but we have some ideas floating around here in our county government that we try to realize so that the people can benefit, and that was a real benefit to our people. So thank you for taking that. It's in our council strategic plan, but thank you for not only letting those things be words, but letting the words turn into action. And then lastly, what is faith? Faith without action is really dead. And so, the action, or call to action tonight, as we heard, is love. Love drives out hate. Love chases the darkness away. All of the religious, meaning at least those that are well-meaning, faith traditions have a common core of loving humanity. There's a general tenet of all of them that weaves a strand and a cord that unites and binds us together. And so, my prayer is that as we participate in this civic, civil or civic process, that we don't forget that we are mind, body, and soul. And when we lay our heads on our pillows at night, you have to be able to sleep with the decisions and the actions and the words and the things that we have said done and perpetuated as we carry out not only our duties here on council, but as human beings in the world. Mr. Darby said it well, and I'll say it again. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me.